Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
On second.
Motion made. Second, put in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
Motion made, second, put in favor.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on down to guest speakers for communication and rationalizing. We've got the Red Rock Groundbreaking, which will be Wednesday, July 18th, at Cadmus Road, eleven thirty to two. Lunch is included.
Where? You said where? Uh, who? Is that?
At the side.
On Cadmus Road? Sure. You over there. Do you know where it is? Sound the tone.
Next, we have Occupy East Street, Fair and Car Show, would you like one first? Jennifer Albertson. Not here. Requesting the use of the Tens Court for three-on-three basketball tournament. Council have any objections to that?
Um, I think it's probably a good idea.
Okay, so moved. Request for assistance for Oregon housing planning project.
And that's just information. Darwin and I, we submitted an intent letter that we would like to provide for that. I think that's what we call the disanet, Darwin. So just hopefully we can get some of this done.
And we have our Lake of Oregon cities in this issue. Okay, well, let's on down with Maurice Lutley.
And I'm here.
You're here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maurice Lutley, and I live at one forty-five Southeast Street. And I've been a part of this community for sixty-seven of my eighty-four years. I've been involved with a lot that goes on with the town. I was on the council at one time. My husband was on the council, he was the factory. And I'm here to object to this ten-dollar raise in the water rates. Um, I don't have a solution. They asked me if I had a solution, I don't. But I was on the council when we built a new sewer ponds. We raised the rates three times at that time, over a period of time, with the idea that we'd raise them twice, and then if, if not needed, we wouldn't do it the third time. I wasn't here for that third raise. But I, and we had no objections that I can remember to those raises. But I have not talked to one person, not one, that's in favor of this to, to, if it were going for the water, to improve our water, and heaven knows, we all know it needs to be improved. Sorry, Jeff. But it's, uh, we have this room filled to, to capacity, to support that. But I have heard nothing but negative on this. So I'm here to, to state my opinion, and that's it.
Okay, Maurice, this was, this is not only just for police, but also the fire and nine-one-one?
Well, you know, I supported fire and nine-one-one for forty years, but I, I just, I still think that if, if in the future, if Jeff needs more money for the water and for that, what are you gonna do? Come back and raise it again to support that? I just think you need to look at your budget a little closer and see if there can't be another solution.
Yep.
And I'm not the only one here to object to this. I'm just the one that had my name on the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to add that if I could.
Are we moving on?
Well, we'll go down to the public comment, and we'll, that'll address the rest of it. So now we'll move into public comment period.
I'd like to add something.
Yeah.
My name's Kyle Butler. I lived here on and off, mostly here for fifteen years, a combat veteran, US Army. Um, I have, I'm also the administrator of the Lakeview Forum, which is online on Facebook.
Oops.
Time's up, I guess. So, um, so I ran a poll for the members in my Lakeview Forum group on Facebook, and out of fifty-three people that responded to the poll, all fifty-three people did not want the ten-dollar surcharge to go towards law enforcement, EMS, or anything to that degree. They want a haul to go with fixing the water. My, my water personally is fine. I know many people have been affected before by it. Um, I think it's a slap in the face to the public, to be quite honest, to be able to remit. That's raising, doing a ten-dollar surcharge is not how you fix a problem, first and foremost. I mean, if, if, if another cop needs to be added, or another EMS position needs to be added, we're gonna raise another ten dollars, and just gonna keep going up and up and up? Other than other cities, whereas people don't cost, you know, pay a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty bucks, you know, for police officers being added and such. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I think it's a slap in the face to all the citizens here, living in this town. This water needs to be fixed now, put the ten-dollar surcharge towards that. And I can tell you, if more people could be here, and meetings weren't held at four o'clock during working hours, not only would this building be filled up to capacity, but you'd have the block looped around three times the people that agree with us. So I demand that it gets fixed, and it goes towards the water.
Okay, now, you talk, you talked about the water, and we've had, we've had many meetings on the water, and everybody badmouths us on Facebook, but they don't come to the meeting to...
I'm here.
Let me, let me finish, to understand what we've done, all right? Let me explain something to you. We just signed a contract with a contractor for eight-hundred-and-seventy-some-odd thousand dollars to replace two lines from the water tanks, third down to the city shop, down North Second. We are currently working on a well right now to get it up and running. The guys are flushing the lines more than they've ever been flushed. We've added more chlorine to the water. We are trying, and we are working on it. It's not like we're sitting here doing nothing. In fact, I just signed some papers just a little bit ago, before I came in, for the town engineer on this same project up here.
Can I re-cutting to what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, we are working on the water, but now what we've got is, our police department is the lowest paid, one of the lowest-paid departments in the state of Oregon. We cannot even recruit officers in here, because our pay is so low. They go elsewhere. And if we do get one, and we send them for sixteen weeks to the academy, they come back, work a short time, and then they leave, because they can get more pay at another place. So here we are, we spent all this money out, and we're back to square one. What we need to do is, we need to get up our department, and our nine-one-one, and our fire department, because we're understaffed over there, and underpaid. So what is the solution? We could throw out a levy, you know? Taxes?
Okay, yeah, well, so then, if I can address you.
Yeah.
One-on-one. Okay, so a budget proposal, you know, throw in a budget proposal, throw in a levy, you know, but, but taking, taking a surcharge from the water, and applying it to other things. I mean, I understand it's probably part of the general fund, though, I understand that correct? The wat, water surcharge going directly into the general fund?
See, that, that ten dollars isn't going to the water, it'll go to a safety net.
I, I understand what you're saying, sir. What I'm saying is, is that ten dollars is a water surcharge, right?
No.
No.
It's a public safety surcharge.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If I could make a few comments, because I, I do know that there has been some information disseminated in our community, uh, in regards to our past council meeting and discussions on the issue. There seems to be disgruntlement, because the issue of the safety fee, is what we're speaking of today, is tied into, the only tie into the water department is that it would be billed on the same sheet of paper. So, I guess what I hear from everyone so far is, we want extra police. We heard it in the last meeting, we hear it in this meeting. We'd like to have those kind of services, we'd like to have better water. That's a different issue. The water is being worked on, as the mayor said, but the disinformation that went out in our community via certain entities, said that the water rate is where that was going to be tacked on to. That's wrong. It's a safety fee. The safety fee we can bill out if you, as the public, would like for us to, at an expense each month, another sheet of paper, please, again. Simple as that. There is no tie to the water department. It strictly is a safety fee for our three entities, police, fire, and dispatch, that we all rely on in times of need. And so I, I think the discontent that I hear, and I, that's just my assertion of the situation, is that people want to see our water improved. I understand that, we're working on that, and I've seen great improvements in our water already. I, I don't see the, the brown water that we've talked about for a long time. Jeff, thanks for cleaning up a lot of it. But there's other things that are being worked on. But the, the whole disgruntlement, and I would be very disgruntled, too, if I had believed what I saw, and that was that it was strictly tied in with the water. And it is not. It is a safety fee, a ten-dollar safety fee, and that fee will go towards those three entities, fire, police.
Okay. I think I'm receiving what you're saying.
Okay, the, the only reason that it, I think, got tied in is because we were going to save money for the taxpayers, for those who are going to be doing it, and rather than taking, uh, I'm not sure what our billing is, it's, it seems like it, it cost us close to two thousand a month to send out our water bill. All we were gonna do is tack on their safety fee bill, I mean, safety fee line, ten dollars, had nothing to do with the water. But we could go out with another bill, you could get two bills, one for water, and another for safety fee. And that would be, I think, a simplification where people could understand that there's nothing to do with water, in regards to what our proposal is.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my situat, my, what I'm seeing here is, is that what you guys are trying to do, what you, what you claim you're trying to do, is streamline your guys' bills for, for the town, right?
Exactly, and I think that it, just the, this information is really what causes the disgruntlement.
Yeah, and I, yeah, that's the information that I have.
And I understand where you're coming from.
Absolutely, and of course, I mean, I, I don't see how people would feel like a slap in the face if that would be the case, right?
Sure.
So I guess where I'm coming from is, is if it's a separate, if it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the water, like you're stating.
And that doesn't, I promise.
And, and, and we pay taxes, and we pay the bills here, for everybody, okay? So it should be separate. I mean, it, what, it makes, it makes us wander into this weird little quasi, you know, reality, where it's, where it's not. That's not the way it is, you know? I mean, and then, so now we're like, we're teed off, and all you guys gotta do is turn up the speaker and do it out.
I guess, yeah, what we were trying to do is take the, maybe the twelve thousand dollars that, that it would be for, for billing on an additional safety fee, and put that towards the services, rather than to send out in the mail. I guess that's really all we were doing. Maybe we should back up and just say, sorry, twelve thousand dollars, or whatever amount it is to bill the fund for that safety fee. And, and that would probably line it back out to where people here in our, in our community could feel more at ease at night, when we have an officer on duty. I know we heard that over and over and over, and that's why we did what we did.
Yeah, and I'm not against law enforcement, any means.
No, I know you're not.
You know, I'm all for law enforcement, especially if we can fill a fifth position before we start looking for funding in six.
I, I just think it was tied together too closely.
Young lady in the corner had her hand up for quite a while.
Well, um, I...
Please state the name of the town recorder.
Sorry, Kayla, Kayla Bridge. I think that, that kind of clarification of the miscommunication would put a lot of people's minds at ease. And if communication is simply the issue, I don't think anybody is disagreeing that emergency services versus responders can use help. I mean, I think, and anyone in this room would support first responders, as far as them getting some kind of funding to increase availability, or that sort of thing. But it, it kinda sounds like the communication is the issue, the communication with the townspeople. It's the way that the, the paper, the examiner stated...
Exactly.
Was very misleading for the general public, as far as the fact that the money from this ten-dollar water surcharge, is how they worded it, is going to opening up a sixth position in the, in the police force, when there's still a fifth position that needs to be filled. And if that's the case, if pay is an issue, which could very well be an issue, and recruiting is difficult because of pay, which is a very valid complaint, very valid issue, then why not have that money go towards raising the, the paychecks of the police that are already established, and filling that fifth position, getting that recruited before we open a sixth position? Does that make sense? What I'm saying?
Thank you.
Um, Laurie?
Oh.
I'll get you in a minute, back there, Stuart.
Laurie Crocker, three sixteen Mountain View Drive. I, I believe that, that police need raised, you know, and I believe we should have twenty-four seven coverage. That's not the issue that I'm here for. The issue that I'm here for is, I work with a lot of vulnerable people in the community. They can't afford ten more dollars on their, on their water bill. If it's a separate thing for safety, maybe there needs to be a levy or something. But there, there, you take two people who are on minimum wage, and with two children, their bosses are not going to raise their salary ten dollars a month, a hundred and twenty dollars a year. And prices just keep going up and up. So when water gets shut off, then they have to, my understanding is, you know, they have to pay a little extra, you know, to get it put back on and everything. And I think the two don't mix. Maybe there should be a levy, so, or something that's floated in the community, to see who really supports this. Because I know that, that a lot of people like to get their information by Facebook, but a, a lot of the people that I work with don't have Facebook, they don't have computers. And I'm talking about some of the most vulnerable in the community. They need water, their families need water. And I think you need to think about this, because yes, it's wonderful if we can raise salaries, and if we can have another policeman, and so forth like that. I really believe that, maybe there's some grants that we can get. But, um, I don't know. I just think that before you make a final decision on this, that you need to think about how it affects the most vulnerable in our community, which are our elderly and our younger people. And their salaries are not going to go up. And people on fixed income, I, you know, I work with people where I go in their, their homes, to help them with food, or something like this, and it's so meager. Their social security's not going to go up, ten dollars a month. So maybe they won't have water, I don't know. Uh, but I want, I want you to think about that. Because we have a lot of these kinds of people living in our community, in the town. Thank you.
Okay, Stuart?
Stuart, Stuart, I live here in Lakeview.
What's your address?
Four twenty-nine South Ice Street.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple things here. First of all, I want to clarify, when we're hiring officers, where does the pay come from? Is it property taxes, what?
It's a general fund.
It's property taxes, that pays the officer's wages? Okay, thank you. Now, the next thing, uh, you know, I concur with some of the stuff that's already been mentioned. I understand single-line accounting, and whatnot, double-line accounting, whatever you're gonna call it. I understand that. I did come in for clarification on how each separate line item goes into each separate billing for debit and credits. I understand all that. Uh, the safety net, can you clarify that just a little bit more? What, you said the fee's going to a safety net?
Safety fee?
Safety fee?
Fee.
I heard, oh, yeah, or fee.
Ten-dollar safety fee.
It's a safety fee?
Yeah.
And that's for what intentions? I mean, does this clearly cover whatever we...
Police, fire, and dispatch, our emergency services.
And will we be notified as far as this, what spending is going to occur, right?
Well, I think it's pretty limited.
New uniforms, new acquired equipment, are there just...
No, I think, I think, what, what's been...
It should not be mixed with...
What's been discussed at this point is, is an additional officer for nighttime service.
Right, okay. I understand, uh, we have a current bill for five officers. We're gonna be down to three in three days. And I, I, I understand that people want to raise their wages, but I did a little research, and the states on the west coast and the states on the east coast have the highest national average for the highest-paid officers currently. Everywhere between are a lot lower paid, on average. But I do understand you want to give the people a raise and a retention, and so, the cost of living here is quite, uh, there's a night and day. 'Cause I was looking at baby moving, and I thought, nah, I got a kid here. But as far as my wages, and I'm looking at trying to live in Bend, I'd have to live on the streets to live in Bend, too. I know that for a fact. So what kind of progress have we made as far as hiring more police officers? What are we doing for recruitment? We're gonna have two empty billets, and maybe a third one if this water thing, if this new fee is approved.
I didn't quite hear all the questions.
What, what are we doing right now for recruitment for at least two officers that we're gonna need to fill the current billet? In addition to, now we're trying to create a sixth billet, are we making, what kind of progress for that?
Go ahead.
We are advertising right now for a police chief position, and we are going to review applications tomorrow for one of the police officers. It's a kinda detrimental, in a way, if we hire that officer before we get a new police chief. But we may go ahead and do that, depends on the span of time that we get a new chief. So we'll probably move forward with a police officer, and that will give us our, you know, and then we'll appoint a police chief. So we're in that process right now. I've got everything out advertised, um, I'm gonna put it in another location tomorrow. So we're trying to get it out, so we can get qualified people.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Go ahead.
I'm Peter Chastain, and I live at seven four seven South Ninth Street. And I've moved here from California. I pay property taxes there still, and I pay property taxes here. I, I'm a property owner, so I have rental property. And just, just as a practical matter, I would much, okay, first of all, I absolutely support having a fully-staffed police force and paying for it. And I would like to pay for it via taxes, rather than a water fee, because, well, as a practical matter, a couple of things. Number one, I can deduct my local property taxes off my federal and state income tax. And, well, there's this whole other issue that other people have talked about, that something that is not connected with water shouldn't be mixed in with water. But the, the other practical thing is that, you know, if some of my tenants pay their own water bill, and am I gonna ask them to pay for something that should be out of property taxes, and that I would be happy to pay for? Are, are we gonna burden them to pay it with their water bill? I think, I think that's an unfortunate approach to take. And I have a question that, that I don't quite understand. In, in California, on my property tax, there's all kinds of districts. There's the, this library district, and the Daphne Steve district, and so on, that are smaller than the county. And so I guess my question is, here in, in Oregon, is there some state law that requires that, what, what would prevent make, passing this, you know, a tax increase that would go as a levy on the property tax? Wouldn't, wouldn't that be a more straightforward, more convenient way to do it?
Yep.
If, if indeed there's some legal reason why that can't be done, I'd like to hear it, but also I think that that should be publicized, you know, in the paper and everything, that, that people should, people should understand that there's some reason why statutorily that can't be done, that, you know, to explain why, and maybe get that law changed. But for now, it seems to me like, yeah, I want police protection, and I'm willing to pay taxes, and it should be with the taxes, not a water bill.
Mr. Chastain, I, I would first say that I believe that your enforcement is covered by the county, because you're in a county and not in a town, so...
Okay, but I have property that...
They, they charge enforcement, their enforcement, should the county...
Through property.
You pay no, you pay no taxes to the town of Lakeview.
I guess philosophically, I mean, suppose I have, suppose I have property that is...
Located in the town.
In, in the town. I mean, I'm not just talking about for myself, I'm talking about what's proper and what should be done. And, and, and again, one of my major issues is the fact that I think as the property owner, I should be paying the taxes and not ask my tenants to do it.
Water is a necessity of life. What about the motel tax? Where's that going? Why to have different sections?
Good afternoon, Dustin Missersen, I live here in town, one seven six five Drake Street. Um, I, I oppose a ten-dollar fee as well. Um, you know, back in nineteen ninety, Major Five was passed by the voters of the state of Oregon. It restricted taxes, and they had war tax, and the amount that it could increase. I think there's another major shortly after that that assisted that. These fees are relatively new in, in city governments and county governments around the state, because it's a way to bypass that. It's a convenient way to bypass the limitations that are in our constitution of the state of Oregon on our tax rates and how they're gonna increase. And one thing, one reason why, if you go back to the nineties, of why those measures passed it, is it passed because there's safeguards in place that people could count on, that their taxes would only increase so much every year, and not run away out of control. I'm not sure that I hear any safeguards with this ten-dollar fee. I don't know what prevents you from raising it to twenty dollars next year, thirty dollars a year after. Where does it end? I don't know. Would you? I don't know. But that would be a concern for me. I would support a levy, just as this gentleman said, being on property taxes is, is a different and better way. The other thing with a levy, the people of this town get to vote on. We get to vote on whether we support it or not. I support the police department, I support the fire department, but there's a couple of issues that I have here, is, we're talking about rushing in to hire police officers and a police chief, haven't heard any discussion about other alternatives. I'd like to look at other alternatives. I think personally, the better alternative is to contract with the county sheriff's department.
I agree.
I think that's a better way to go. I think a lot of folks feel that way as well. And so rushing in to build an organization, it's, you know, we're just trying to put Band-Aids on things. Where is the real, uh, study into what is the best option for us? The other thing with the fee and going to nine-one-one, like, nine-one-one is a service for Lake County. You're gonna charge, that fee would charge folks that live in Lakeview to support nine-one-one. We're about one-third of the users of nine-one-one.
Okay.
So why is the rest of the county gonna increase their amount that they're paying to? I don't know. I doubt it. I guess why is, being one-third of the populace, should we be supporting a hundred percent of the increase? The other issue I have is the fire department. You know, they probably could use new equipment, they probably could use some upgrades, but how is that gonna impact me and my insurance rates? That's where the real benefit is from increases in fire departments comes through homeowners' insurance. So as a homeowner of Lakeview, whatever you propose and put in a levy, how are you gonna benefit me by doing that? I wanna see my insurance rates go down. And what does that, what does that mean that they need to get to be able to do that? So those are the issues I have. I think it's jumping to a conclusion without really looking at the, the issue. I think it's the wrong time to do it. I think more should go into it. I'm sorry that the police department, you know, you have to down folks, but there's a better way to do it. You may disagree with me, but there's a better way to do it. You know, we're a pretty small town, and, uh, you know, definition of insanity is to continue to keep doing the same thing over and over, and that's where I feel like we're at. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one last quick question. Um, I have not lived here very... I have not lived here very long. I moved here from out of state and one thing that I know was a process in the state of Arizona is, I know that these two new dispensaries just popped up in town. I know that that alone is controversial here, but, and I, I wanted to ask and clarify because I don't know. In Arizona, the tax revenue that comes from dispensaries goes into law enforcement. It goes into public safety and it, and other government benefits. But is that something that happens here in Oregon or in Lake County?
There's some money, but-
The town collects no money for dispensary, but there is a proposition, or it's not a proposition, there is discussion of putting it on the ballot to tax locally the dispensaries on what they sell as far as products, which we all I think are in agreement that we need to make something off of the fact that they're here in our community. So that is something that will be-
Right.
Communities can go up to three percent.
And I, I read through an article that someone shared with me that if you, if you vote in favor or if you support having the dispensaries in the community, then you benefit from the tax revenue. If you vote against it, then you don't. And I, I, I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but Lake County did not vote for the dispensaries, but Lakeview did. And so I was just curious, is to, are, are we, is law enforcement benefiting from that tax revenue or not?
Yes. It is.
On the state level, on the state level?
On the state level. We get what is called state revenue sharing, which is different innings, but we are, this year we've gotten eight thousand dollars that will go towards the police department for public safety or, you know, but that, that portion that we get from the state has to go towards the police.
My name's Anna Marie Dand, I live eighteen hundred North Fourth Street. I have a question with the new businesses coming in like Red Rock and these, you know, these energy companies. You can work this, if you wanna, you wanna do your business here, what can you do for us? You wanna give us money for this? I would like to have somebody put a solar panel up so the pool could be heated because the pumps don't work. Anyway, that's one of my things, but we could, couldn't we make that some part of the attractiveness of coming to Lakeview? You know, you benefit by contributing to the welfare of the entire community in your services and in your participation. You know, a lot of these people may not be paying taxes here. I don't know how it works, I'm new here. I was born here, I just started living here five years ago and it's, is there not a general fund for the county that this is paid for out of? And why is, why is the county not your police officer? Everybody's in the county. I know at my house, I'm outside of county, but I'm in town. It's like, I don't understand. I'm lost. Anyway, but it's that, you know, put it all in one, why do we need two separate police departments? I, I, I think we need it, yes, but I, why, why them and us and we don't, you know, that makes no sense to me. Is that efficient? You know, it's, I don't know. Is there a general fund out of the county that this kind of, you know, personnel gets paid for?
Not our personnel, they pay for the county, we pay for the town.
That seems a little unfair, don't you think? So, yeah, okay.
I just have one question for clarification. It was mentioned just a moment ago about the marijuana sales and stuff. Now, I understand that goes into a state, state kitty or whatever you wanna call it, state fund and then we get a percentage of that. So everywhere anybody sells anything, whether it's here, Christmas Valley, Plymouth, Salem, it all goes into one big pot? Excuse the-
It's not even-
Excuse the, excuse the butt. And then a small percentage of whatever percentage we've been delianated comes to us for law enforcement.
It's, it's per capita for, you know, how many people are in town is how they base on what each town gets.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more comment and this has nothing to do, well, it probably does with Jeff's department, but the-
I'm picking on you, Jill, but I can.
The sidewalk up and around the pool, you know, we have a lot of visitors in the summer and I don't swim, but I, I'm up there a lot, but it's embarrassing for that sidewalk to be in the shape that it's in. It's been that way for years now and I've been gonna come up here and talk to you about it for quite a while, but I just thought of it again, so.
It's a hazard.
It's a hazard, yeah. It needs to be taken care of because, like I said, we do have a lot of visitors during the summer and they camp up there during swim meets.
You know, Maurice, I agree with you on that, but you know, right now-
There is the money.
Right now, I'm trying to get the daycare updated. Well, we've had contractors and a lot of those contractors are booked up through December.
Who and what? Who they wanna go for?
So we had a contractor to do that and we're gonna have to hire somebody from out of town. And we wanna try to keep the local contractors going, but I agree, we've had some sidewalks around here that need to be worked on, but-
As soon as we can, let's hear that.
It's a liability if you, if what's gonna happen, what's it gonna cost the town if someone gets hurt? It's that bad?
Okay, we'll look at it. Yeah, as far as the pool, when you said solar panels, Jeff and them just installed the heat exchanger?
Not yet.
Not yet?
We received it.
We're working on it.
So does it not have access to one of the hot springs? I was told it does.
It has geothermal.
But it just doesn't have the pump?
Well, the pump will help keep, maintain the temperature of the water, because right now during the day, if we, it doesn't continually bring in the hot water because we don't have a way to separate it so people get burned. I think that's basically the bottom line.
It's a complicated issue that we really can't go into probably right now, but it, we need a heat exchanger to keep the prime water in the pool that's treated with chlorine and the pH is balanced in it. It has to remain separate from the well water because the, the well water has the wrong pH and has no chlorine in it, so very costly to keep the pool sanitary and the pH balanced in it so it's safe to swim in and dump the warm water out of the, which is what they did in the past, just dumped the warm water straight into it. So we need a way to separate those two bodies of water, which will be done through a heat exchanger and we, you know, receive the, the heat exchanger the day the pool opens and then it needs to rebuild and so it's, it just doesn't happen overnight.
Couple weeks, huh?
Scott, do you have a question?
Yeah. I'm Scott Stewart, live at nine fifty-two South Fourth. Say, I know part of our, I guess, deal with PP and L is that we get our street lights taken care of, you know. Well, there's a hell of a lot of street lights out in this town. I mean, I call PP and L constantly about street lights, but somebody, you know, that works nights needs to go around and get these poll numbers on. I mean, I think I counted fifteen lights in just not uptown, but around that are out and especially on the highway with the amount of deer that's in town, it's a real hazard. I mean, there's constantly deer getting hit from my mom's house and we need to get someone, you know, that, and also, everybody else is hit on this water rate, but no one said, you know, the wages are low for police, fire, dispatch, but how about the public works guys? I mean, they're down at the bottom also, so if you're gonna, you know, single them out, I mean, you gotta look at everybody if you're gonna do that. So, and also is, last year I came up here and asked for the amount of people that were getting charged the dollar a month, snow removal fee, you know, how many counts? Because the way I understood it is you're supposed to collect twenty-five thousand dollars and then stop charging it on your water bills. And, you know, if you've got a thousand customers, you're getting out a month, it doesn't take long to do the math. So I would like an accounting, you know, of how many people are getting charged this dollar a month. It's just a dollar, but I see now the ten dollars a month, you know, going into Sutton and, and it's just, I think that the town needs to be a little more open to the public of where, you know, you're at, you know, and how much you spend on snow removal, flood, whatever, and where's this account at? Because I, you know, I came up here last year and no one gave me the information and said, you know, come back in a week and it didn't happen and so on, so I'm coming to you folks. I would like to know what's the balance, so, and how many accounts are being charged per month for this?
Scott, just to address that, because I do remember you coming in and talking about that.
Yeah.
Anton and I were both up there and it's anybody inside the city limits that get charges that, that snow, snow flood fee. Anybody past Ninth Street does not get charged that.
How many accounts is that though?
Well, that is something that we have to get from Cassell, get it separated, that is county in town. It will take a while to get all that for you.
Well, it's been a year.
Well, I did go at it.
So.
And also, that ordinance says it's fifty thousand dollars when the snow flood gets to the fifty thousand dollar fee.
And I also thought it was, if it was a bad year, an extremely bad year, where the city crew couldn't keep up with it. Not every year you're gonna hire a contractor to clean driveways.
No, what it is.
It didn't say that in the paper, so I'm just, I thought it was, you know, bad years.
It was worded in such a way that it covered the clearing of the driveways because we never had enough personnel to clear driveways. People came forward, said they definitely wanted to continue with that. We started doing it, you know, when we had spare time and then people said they wanted to continue with that, so the fund was set up that when, at a dollar a month, when it gets to fifty thousand, it shuts off and then when it gets below the twenty-five thousand, it turns back on. And it was off here a year or so ago and it just came back on, so.
So you're telling me every time it snows, the city crew's not gonna clean driveways?
We do not have enough people. We keep streets open and haul off to uptown, we don't have enough people to clear the driveway.
Jeff, when I worked there, we did and we got it all done. And you got more people there now than we did and we had everything.
Same amount of people.
Okay, but I, I just think that it's kind of a shame.
It's time to move on. Any more comments on this?
So are you gonna get me that information?
Sure. Not a problem.
Okay, I mean, I wanna clarify that.
Yeah, no, we'll get the information. I didn't know, I was hoping you'd have gotten it already, so, yeah.
Okay, move on. Department reports, Carol's not here, Vanessa's not here, Fire Chief, Scott's not here for nine one one. Chief?
So I'll give you the numbers for the month of May, twenty eighteen. The Lakeview Police Department responded to three hundred and forty-nine calls for service. I believe it was two hundred and fifty-five of those were dispatch calls for service. Eighty-seven of those were self-initiated contacts or, or calls within the town of Lakeview. During that period of time, we had, I'm sorry, I have a couple of copies here. During that period of time, we had a total of thirty-three actual case numbers that we pulled. We had three arrests, which is a little bit down from last year by one arrest. We had four, it appears, from last year. And as far as the rest of the numbers are accumulated in, like thefts, thefts, thefts from vehicles, suspicious circumstances, things like that. I do not wanna mislead anyone, we did not take three hundred and forty-nine case numbers. That was our total calls for service. So that's suspicious circumstances, you know, suspicious vehicles, people, things of that nature. Since we met last, I completed the policy manual for the Town of Lakeview Police Department, which is right up around six hundred pages at this point. So that has been put in place and that's something the town manager is going to be presenting to the town council so that they can review it. Those are in place at this point and that is what's gonna be governing the Lakeview Police Department after I, after I depart and then depending on the direction on police services the town decides to go once I leave. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A report, Jeff?
I don't have anything to add other than what was in my report. Roberta and I met with our new contractor for the water project, it's gonna begin, begin, I think the start date on that's gonna be the fourth of July, oh no, the second of July, and they'll work the second, third, then start back up on, perhaps Friday, just to get started, put that water lines in.
Well, we had the Red Rock Conference call it last week and so they're moving forward, so we're just making sure all their agreements get in place and as far as the town side, we'll have a special public works fund where we're gonna extend the water sewer down on Cattermas Road to Red Rock, but there's agreements where they pay a portion and they have to guarantee thirty-one employees, so we're moving forward on that. And then we had some questions on the annexation that was adopted on the twenty-ninth, so I made sure everybody was clarified on that. Then, like I said earlier, I've been reposing positions, especially the chief position, get that filled as soon as we can and we have some ideas and, and we're open for options. So then Jeff said we had that pre-conference meeting this morning and so we're really excited. That's gonna be a huge project, it's got thirty-nine connections for water meters, so that will help update our current water meters and then help improve the line. So it's a really big project from the very, from the bank up on the hill down Second Street that ends at what location?
M Street.
M Street.
One ends at M and one ends at N.
So.
One transfer, two by N.
Yeah, so it's a really big project. So that's gonna help, you know, our water condition, you know, so that is really a good project. Then I continue with my day, you know, my weekly meetings with Jeff Headland, Darrell, the chief, everybody that I meet with, department heads, and then I'm, we're gonna be going into labor negotiations like tomorrow for the next day. I mean, it's, we're working with the union and also I have a labor attorney that we're working on, so we've started kind of going back and forth and those, it was scheduled for Thursday, but it's been delayed, so we'll get going on that as soon as we can, so. And I think that's it.
Just a couple of questions, real quick. I understand that Red Rock is standing up. Do we know how many work crews are coming and in and do we have adequate housing for them?
I'm gonna answer something. No, no, we don't know how many, we were just notified last, we don't know, Darren went to that, there was a meeting on the geology or the, you know, not geology, but archeology stuff and we don't really know. We don't know for sure yet, so.
So you don't know how many are coming, if they're arriving, if we have any way of supporting housing or otherwise?
Let's dig a little bit to the, what Red Rock, I mean, off, offline, we can certainly talk more about Red Rock, but thirty-one at the site, fifty to seventy-five out in the woods getting materials and there'll be obviously some indirect jobs that are created because of this. Construction workers, you know, it can vary, I mean, two-hundred to four-hundred would probably be a decent estimate of how many construction workers will out there during, during an eighteen to two-year month.
Right. My, my direct question was, do we have the housing with the ability to support this influx of people?
So if you were here during times we had really fight going through, then we had, you know, certainly some-
So are they gonna, so are they gonna start that up out there again?
We are going to open it on Third Street. There are discussions right now, we have a couple of people looking to buy it or the owner would, hoping to expand it, so, or get it back going again, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? We want old business. Okay, we want a new business. This is ordinance number six- This is ordinance number sixty-five. The ordinance at the Town of Lakeview to establish a public safety surcharge to finance police fire services.
This is the whole. Sorry, there was just a mistake. Which is just that, um, the council didn't have the 911.
Well, I'm not quite ready to vote on this. I think the audience gave you some proof of that. I definitely think I would like to give this a lot more consideration before I am ready to vote, and if I am forced to vote today, it will be a no. I think we need to look at some of the things suggested by the audience before we make any further decisions on this particular area. And other people in town who I've spoken to besides people who, thank you all for coming, because it is good to get your input. Thank you.
Sharon?
Could I just make one comment that, that if you're going to go forward on this, I, I, I would just personally recommend that you have a nighttime forum where you are available to talk this over with the, I mean, well advertised, not just on Facebook or anything like that, but through the newspaper and radios and everything, where people can come and understand what it is, because I've been gone for almost three weeks, and I came back and read it in the paper, and, and I just, I had eighteen calls, you know, to respond to on the phone, said, Lori, can you go talk about this? You know, we can't afford this. But I just think that that would be a good thing to do if you're going to go forward with it, to have a nighttime forum, not, not a daytime, because there's too many people working, and they can't get here at four o'clock. That's just a suggestion.
Scott?
So, we've met now on this at least the second time that I'm aware of. I was at the last meeting, which I stated many of the same concerns that many of you have raised today, and some of you that caught me outside of this meeting, and those will catch us certainly after this meeting, have heard a lot of what my stance is on this. I mean, we have a budget, we went through a budget process just a couple of weeks ago, and, and, you know, as we are charged to adopt a budget, we include this potentially as, as a line item that would support another officer and some of the items that this ordinance would cover. Certainly, you know, we've, we've heard that we have water issues, and I think in the last few months, there's been a lot of work being done to address those issues. What hasn't been talked about yet today was that there's a water master plan that Daryl Anderson, our engineer, has been working on, that was funded through a grant through the state to kinda assess the water needs that we have, and to see what we need to do to address them and to, to make some improvements, other than what we're currently and constantly doing, which is always going to have to grant monies and provided by the state to, to fix the systems that we have in place and to, to, you know, provide the services that we're required to provide. I will point out that, that as we went through the budget process, again, we struggle, like many organizations that are, that are tasked to, to take care of budgets, we, we struggle to, to fill the seats needed to, to have a full budget committee. That's a constant concern that I have as we move forward, getting people involved, as you guys are today, we need some of you that have previously stepped forward and done it, to continue to, to look out for yourselves, but also for the, the rest of the citizens that, that we're here to, to live amongst and, and to, to work with and, and live with. The concerns, especially with our, our older population, you know, are something I think we all understand and have a hard task trying to figure out how we're gonna best provide these services. A hundred and twenty dollars for one account over the course of year may not be a lot to some, but it is certainly to others, and, you know, I know it's, it's a lot for me, you know, I mean, you know, I got a large family that, that would be a lot for, however, you know, we, we have heard constantly, along with the water issues, you know, law enforcement having a hard time keeping up with a lot of the crime that happens, and, you know, there are some solutions that will be coming, you know, you asked about the logic tax, and that's a separate issue, however, thirty percent of the revenue comes from that, but we're on a general fund, hopefully to help provide for some of these services that we're talking about. It's all lumped into one big whole as a general fund budget, and we've gotta figure out how to manage it correctly, that's why, you know, we, we advertise and ask for assistance in the budget-making process. Certainly, you guys can all review the budget. We, we reviewed it and it went forward, but this is something that, that we need to address, providing, you know, adequate services, and, as Andrew said, I'm, I'm not ready to, to close this issue. I think we can take a vote today, and, and it might, you know, pass, it might fail, however, I would, I'm still in opposition to it, because I think that there are better solutions out there, although I will tell you, as I help deal with the county budget as well, is that, you know, insurance costs for all, you know, staff positions is where a lot of this gets soaked up at, and, you know, as a lot of the revenue, the tax revenue gets spent on. So, you know, we need to address some of the issues that we have, and we appreciate the comments, and I, I certainly, you know, don't take any of this lightly, I think we're all appointed to represent you and serve you, but we, you know, we have some major issues, and throwing out a water bill is kinda misleading, but ultimately was done, and presented this way to save, save some money in sending a separate bill for this service. There are roughly, from, from our estimates of sixty-five thousand and five dollars, that makes roughly about eleven hundred accounts, to address your, your question there. So, at eleven hundred accounts, you know, we're looking at, at, potentially with ten dollars is a hundred and thirty thousand in revenue, you know, from this fee, which would definitely support a position, which would definitely support, you know, some to fire and 911. But, again, it comes at, comes at a cost, and I, I'm trying to review the whole ordinance, if there was an exemption for some folks, if they couldn't afford it, or whatever. You know, I think those things need to be looked at, but, you know, this is difficult meeting, we get to at four o'clock in the, in the afternoon. Now, I'm open for arriving later meetings and, and volunteering my time, obviously. That's kinda where I'm at, it goes along, hopefully address some of your questions. It was quiet before, so now.
I don't wanna do that again.
Last five before, that was my five.
Mike, any other comments on that?
I, the comment that I would make is in regards to our law enforcement here in our community, and I do know that there have been times, even in my immediate family, that there have been calls placed to our police department, and no answer, no answer to the call. And so, I've heard that from many, many people in our community, and that's what I do feel that this was all about, was to enable the Town of Lakeview to have officers who are busy for twenty-four hours a day. I think our community is large enough to deserve that, and so I understand why you are here today, because many of you voiced some good concerns and brought up some good topics that perhaps we do need to allow the community to come in. We've, we've had a public hearing in regards to this, and it was not attended as it is today. The, I guess, the, the problem we find ourselves in is if we put it off and work without a police officer until we have a levy or a tax or whatever it might be, that probably would be something that we could get on, probably not this year, as far as, as a tax initiative, but perhaps in a future year, but that doesn't take care of our need right now for law enforcement officers in our community, so that's, where I'm at is, I, I think we're, you know, we're kinda just saying, oh, we might be without it right now, so.
I agree with the fact that we do need twenty-four hour coverage, totally, and people have been asking for that for years here, for, since it has changed from what it was previously fifteen, twenty years ago, but, right now, there's, I just, if this ordinance were passed, I'm not in agreement with everything in it, and I just think that we need to give it some more thought and have another public meeting, someone has other, you know, guidelines suggested, and other people may have, so that's where I'm at. I really feel the need for that. We also need good water, we need things for the pool, we need this, we need that, but we have to set up a brother.
So, Council, your recommendation is to table this for now?
I would do that, we table this for the time being, yes.
Was it made in second, in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Of course.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on then, we'll table this, and we'll look into a little more. Move on to Resolution nine thirty-four, matter of new government agreement, stay moving through environmental quality in the town, wood smoke production.
I'll second that motion.
In favor?
Aye.
I'm trying to hear what it says. I guess it's something about B Q.
I have no further updates, except that, I would refer to, and, over applications and stuff. Does Council have anything to add?
Be at the chip meeting tomorrow, and school board budgeting in a few minutes.
Lucky you.
The Saturday market is officially going to be at the parking lot, next to Burger Queen and Museum Parking Lot.
Is that this weekend?
Uh, no, they really, their first outing will be next Saturday at the pool party that we have, then they, we'll be at the only days, and the week after that, they'll start that.
Okay, and there's nothing else, and we'll close the council meeting at five oh three? Everybody coming?